Evening and welcome. It's 6 o'clock. It's time for our June 18 regular scheduled board meeting. Tonight, I've asked Commissioner Fleming to open us up with the indication and the pledge.
Let us pray. This afternoon, our Father, we come in your name. We thank you again for your blessings. And, Father, we thank you for how you provided, how you made a way. We pray, God, that you bless us this day. Look over the country. Father, we pray that you make a way for us. Give us strength. Give us decisions to make. Help us to make the right decisions. Father, we thank you for taking us over the dangerous highways and byways. And we pray that you dwell within these, our walls, this day, and keep us safe and give us strength. Father, we love you and we thank you. This we ask, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda, item number one, approval of minutes from the June 5, 2018, regular scheduled board meeting. Do I have any corrections or changes?
Moved to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hill. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to consent agenda. I have 2 through 15. Any items that wish to be pulled for discussion? Hear none. Do I have a motion to approve, 2 through 15?
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to staff reports. James Summers, Public Safety Director, here. Can't see him anymore. We'll just pretend he made it through that. General business, plat mat approval for State Road 51, Live Oak subdivision, Ronald Meeks, Planning and Zoning Director.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, you remember a little time back, we did a land use and zoning change on the intersection there at State Road 51 and 145th Road. And you have also had a developer's agreement that's come before you for approval regarding the development of the proposed site. The subject property needed to be part of a recorded subdivision due to the amount of times that the parent parcel had already been divided. So what you have is a minor subdivision containing two lots. Lot number two, which will be the location at the corner of 145th Road and State Road 51, will be the location of where you'll have a commercial retail store. The other lot, this is lot number one, will be set aside as conservation area. The plat itself notates the area for right-of-way at the northern portion of the property to be used for the realignment of 145th Road, as well as additional dedicated right-of-way along the property line, along 145th, so that they maintain a 60-foot right-of-way, which is the requirement on our LDRs for the pavement of the road. We've also had them add an additional driveway note in the notations there delineating that the driveway access would be limited to 145th Road, so there would be no access along State Road 51 for the commercial retail store. That's pretty much everything I have for the subdivision. If the board approves it, then, you know, we'll have signatures from the chairman added on that, and it will be recorded in the official records. The plat itself has been reviewed by the county staff. It's also been reviewed by a surveyor and found to be in compliance with Chapter 177 Florida statutes. The surveyor on the job is present if you have any specific questions regarding the plat. If not, then I'll just ask for your approval.
Any questions for Mr. Meeks? Do I have a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
Got a motion to approve plat by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any discussion? Any questions? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. All right. Is that it?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Moving on to item 18, discuss with possible board action, engineering and design of sewer plant at I-75 and 136 interchange.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you've got an item that we gave to each of you. The recommendation is, this is the result of negotiating with Robby and Associates. We've got a breakdown in here of the deliverables with a total price of $405,000 lump sum. We will come back later with an actual, well, we won't have title as a task order, but it'll match that same number because we're going to put some numbers with each of those deliverables. But in any event, the recommendation is, requested action is approval of the general contract that Mr. Privat prepared and the lump sum total tonight. And then later, we'll come back with an actual task order that we'll probably just place on the consent agenda. But this is the total.
Any questions for Mr. Harris? To wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. Any questions or discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. All right. Item number 19, discuss with possible board action, any issues associated with the water or the wastewater plant at I-75 and 136. You have anything else related?
No, that's where we are for now. There's still survey work ongoing and some other things. I'll bring you something back, because there's actually something to report right now. We don't have anything there.
All right. We've got three additional agenda items. Agenda item number one, additional agenda item is to discuss the possible board action entities designing to use the classrooms at the Douglas Center. It's time we turn our attention to Clyde Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I have a small issue, not so much of an issue, but we never had a clear understanding, or we never got a clear understanding on when it comes to the use of the classrooms at the Douglas Center. So I had, I was questioned a couple times about what was going on out there, and I really didn't know because I've been honest. So I wanted to, to, I did speak with the director at the Powell program, and I asked him, told him that we need to get a letter, you know, something that showing that they want to use that facility out there because we were solely responsible for it. So I did get a letter, it was addressed to Mr. Harris. Should have been to the Board of County Commissioners, it was addressed to Mr. Harris. Anyway, we, after discussion, they have been using it, but what we want to do is get a clear definition on what's going on at the Douglas Center, those classrooms. So I spoke with Mr. Privat earlier about him getting a letter, getting a draft, or getting something that we can have in place showing that they would be utilizing those classrooms here and after, and so it won't be no misunderstanding. So with that, I just offer a motion that we do allow the use of those, the Powell utilizing those classrooms at Douglas Center.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to try to do this in 30 seconds or less. Little history, Powell program was in place many, many years ago. It was, I think, started under a sheriff, and it was some type of agreement with the school board at the time that owned the property. Board of County Commissioners has never had a formal agreement with them, and I think that's when Commissioner Fleming asked me about it. I told him, I said, "We've never had a formal agreement," albeit we have required other entities since the board actually took it over to come make an appeal to the board for an agreement, which we have a lease that Mr. Privat had put together for that purpose. So we've got someone out there using a classroom under a lease agreement, but we've never held the Powell program to that same standard. And I think that's what Commissioner Fleming had asked of me was, do we have a lease in place with Powell? My answer is no, we know we don't. And Mr. Privat could prepare the same type lease that could be entertained by the board if that's what the board wants to do. But they're using it now. They have been using it.
Yeah, they've been using it, they use the gym and a ween, correct?
Correct. The classroom.
Use about, three or four cla, sometimes it's two classrooms, other times, like summertime, it's more than that.
Yeah, they're using that for their educational program.
Right.
Yeah. No, if they're going to continue to use it, I think we need an agreement with them, just like we have with everyone else. But we don't, do we need board action, or can we just?
I just offer a motion for them allowing to use it this year, and Mr. Privat going to prepare an agreement for them.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody has a problem with them using it. I just figured we'd go ahead and get the agreement done up and put that on the agenda to use.
Every time.
Gentlemen, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I have a contract prepared, but I'd need to know from y'all's perspective, the items that really come into play are, all right, one, you know, what insurance requirements, if any, in addition that they need to have? Two, are they going to pay for any electric? You know, that type of thing. And any particular hours of operation, y'all want to limit it to, you know, what their use is? Those are the minor things that I need to be able to complete it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I get those, those hours of, the director's not here, but the athletic director's here, and I think some of the Powell members are here, board members are here. Maybe they can give us the hours, the time that.
They can fill that out in a, if we're going to have a written agreement, then they could fill it out and if we come back to the board.
Yeah. Yeah, the, as far as the insurance requirements, and have we been requiring anything up to this point that you're aware of?
Yes, sir, on some of the other things, you know, they have to have a minimum coverage so that our coverage will be on top of it, you know, for their liability purposes themselves while they're on the property as a, as a LSE-type insurance.
Well, I mean, even though they, we've not had an official agreement with the agreements they've had in the past, have they had it?
I understand that they have the coverage, but, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, it is required, but if there's anything special that y'all want about it is what I need to know.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What about the, we've never charged them for electricity, is that, or the utilities, is that correct?
I don't think we have.
No.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't see the need then to go forward and charge them. Apparently, it's not, it's not a big enough issue that it's not come up until now, you know, as long as they've been in there. So I don't think that it would be.
I think I'd be, I'd be fine with what, what we've already discussed. I don't see anything extra that we need to.
So pretty much write it up as we've been doing it and make sure the insurance is adequate.
Okay, unless they have something else, and then we can present that at the next board meeting and have it knocked right out.
Yeah.
Of course, they'll be, you know, into it a little bit more, but.
Probably still need to have the hours they would use it, just so we know, and the days and timing on that.
We can have them submit their insurance policy and everything that, and the hours that they need so that attorney can review it and come back to us at either the next board meeting or the following one with an agreement for us to review.
Sure.
Does that work for everyone?
It works.
Okay.
Is it something that we need to vote on, just the consensus?
I think consensus would be all right.
For the moment.
For the moment, yeah. You wishing to speak?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Robert Ford, 8896, 135th Loop, Live Oak. I do serve on the Board of Directors for the Powell program, and what you have said is right along the lines of what is going on. But just to kind of address the hours of operation, they do have like standard hours on the afternoon, but they do have special hours, and they have tournaments and special occasions that's not in the standard hours. So I guess when we do get the lease agreement or some kind of operations, I'm not sure how that will be a kind of delineated in that formal agreement.
I would, I would say communicate with Parks Department and with my office when those things come along, special events. And that's probably about all we'll need, really.
Most of those events that come up, though, that's regarding either the outside property or the gymnasium. It's not usually the classrooms that are after hours, is it?
Yes and no, because we are going along the lines of trying to get, get some after-school tutoring programs in some of those classrooms. It has not been formally, formally bought online yet, but we are trying to push that for, you know, for, have a place where we can have kids to go for homework assistance and things like this and tutoring before they go to the gym for recreational activities.
But what I, would they be, would they be after the hours of school hours or?
Yes, typically, I visualize it being after school. It'd be kind of homework assistance type thing, would be 3:00 to 6:00, or 3:00 to 7:00, or somewhere like that in the afternoon.
I'd say when that gets figured out, you just let us know in writing.
Yeah. I don't, nobody's wishing to hinder what you're wanting to do. I think Mr. Privat can be creative with you, and we can get it covered.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
All right. Moving on to number, additional agenda item number two, request to approve transfer of inventory from the Board of County Commissioners to the Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, there's some, you've got information in your packet. This is really just, you know, kind of a, continuing the conversation that we had before. We're trying to get some of this inventory listed under the proper department. The inventory's always been used essentially by the Sheriff's Department through emergency management. So we're trying to clean this up and just make sure that whoever's going to be responsible for it is listed properly. So that's what you have here. You've got a request to move, actually, to take $136,842.69 worth of inventory off, and then a transfer here of $169,700.04 worth of inventory to the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, sir. So when we're saying taking it off, you're removing it from emergency management inventory list on this first page, this first couple of pages? And then, these are to be transferred from emergency management to the Sheriff's Department under their department?
Several months ago, several months ago, when we shifted emergency management under the Sheriff's Department, I guess the equipment didn't follow.
Right, it used to be under the board.
But it was under the board, probably, what, beginning of the year, middle of last year sometime?
Right.
And then these next pages, is it a breakdown of the? I see total delete up top, 136, 48, 842.69, then transfer sheriff, 169, 700, which were the other two pages, correct?
Some of this has just been deleted because it's obsolete or nonexistent.
Okay.
But they want to remove that stuff off of these ongoing inventory lists that have been around forever as well.
And that is what is, is that what is highlighted?
Well, let me just say, if it isn't on these first, let's see, total deletion, you've got, if you look at the clean pages on the front where they redid it.
Hmm? That's the summary of it?
If you look at those clean pages, they were done after that working sheet was done. They sent their working sheets, but they retyped everything so they could show you what was being transferred and what was being deleted.
Of course, it would.
Like the first four pages.
Read the note from the back.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend a great deal of time looking at those worksheets in the back. That's when they were going through the warehouses, looking at everything, trying to check it off. And then I asked them, I said, "That's going to be so confusing, why don't you retype everything?"
That's a mannequin.
And the dollar amount is probably, I'm assuming, a new purchase price?
Is that what it is?
I know.
The original purchase.
The original purchase price? Because I'm looking at that Dodge Durango from 1999, it says it's worth $30,000, and I'm thinking, probably not.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it.
Next to it says purchase date, so I would assume the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
Where's, where's Randy the Mannequin at?
The what?
Randy the Mannequin.
Where's Randy the Mannequin at?
What was that, Randy the Mannequin?
Yeah.
Wow. I don't know if I want to ask. Just need a motion to approve moving it over to the board's wishes.
I say motion approved.
I say. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Yeah, I was trying to get to it, I think. All right, the last additional agenda item, let's discuss with possible board action, allowing employees' comp time to be donated to an employee that has exhausted sick leave and annual leave. Ms. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you know we have a policy that the board adopted that allows Commissioner, I mean, employees to transfer annual and sick leave to another employee who's exhausted all of their time and is in need. Some of the employees have asked now, can they transfer or donate comp time that they have earned for the same purpose? So I told them I'd asked the commission about that. If the board agrees and votes to do that, the effective date would be today, and then we'll just come back later like we typically do when we clean up the rules and regs, and we'll show that adoption date in there and just include it later in the full publication of the rules and regulations.
Any questions for Ms. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Anyone, you say yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is comp time currently available for an individual employee to use in addition to his, when he exhausts his sick, his or her sick or annual leave, he can use that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, they can use it, and it's 100% payout if they leave us, unlike, the sick leave is 25% once they burn it up. So I don't have a problem with it. If they want to donate to a fellow employee that's out of time due to a prolonged illness, I'm fine with it, just with the same thing we did with the sick leave.
Is there a document?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, is there a document that they signed rolling this over to somebody else is signing?
Yes.
Yeah, they have to, yeah, it's not a pool. We didn't do the pool. It's on donation by individual basis from participating individual, and they direct who it's going to go to.
Direct where it goes, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we have a form currently, the result of the action by, the previous action by the board, so we'll just modify it to include the comp time.
This, Mr. Chairman, this mimics the, the same policy where there's, it's limited to people who have illnesses or just out on disability.
It's the employee or immediate family members, and we've got that defined in that policy as well.
Okay. While we're doing it, should we just go ahead and include annual leave as well? Just get it over with?
Yep, it's in there.
It's in there.
Sick and annual's already in there.
Okay, I didn't know that we did the annual at the first throw-in.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did, by the time it came back.
Okay, okay, well, that's fine, and that's good. This takes care of all of it, and I'm fine with it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve that.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, of a second. Got a second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Moving on to item 21, public concerns and comment. Anyone wishing to speak, they'll make their way to the podium. Hear none.
Back up to Jamie.
Yeah, I'll speak soon, too. Mr. Summers, you want to give your report?
Commissioner's Chairman, good afternoon, good evening. Just a couple things, you notice probably Swanee County's been in the news quite a bit lately for the event down in, down towards the Branford area for the explosion at the welding shop. So those catastrophic events can happen anywhere, even in Swanee County. So it's a tragedy for the family. It was great that we could team up with the sheriff, Love Inc., we were able to raise $5,400, sheriff, and sold 600 meals for that family down in Branford last Friday, and all that money goes towards, I think, burial costs or some other projects, some other things they had going on.
Yeah, burial costs and plus, it's going to be a, I don't know what kind of timeframe for the King Sheriff's company and the investigation, you have done, you have to have some money, but just kind of help pull the moment between the two points.
You know, that investigation, it's with OSHA, Department of Transportation, State Fire Marshal's Office, could last up to a year. I know I had a bottle explosion down towards the Springs in Lurville quite a few years ago, and they still have possession of those bottles for defects and things like that. So, I mean, it takes a while to go through that and try to figure out what actually the cause was. So, but we had a good response, all the personnel was safe, and we were able to, you know, maintain the situation to a minimal. As far as any other things going on, we've got an update on our trucks, they're in production. We should be receiving those about the end of September, beginning in October, so we're desperately excited to get those into service. You'll see the grant, I appreciate the forestry grant approval tonight. Some of that equipment will be associated with those trucks, hoses, nozzles, things like that. So we use that forestry grant to help supply some of that equipment. And then also, our billing, I have a billing report available during the budget workshop. Figured that's the perfect time that we can kind of look over those. So far, numbers have been great, were a little bit more than we predicted, so we were, we were running in the right direction to change billing companies for the benefit of our citizens and the service, so. Any other questions you have for me?
That's true. Any questions?
That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Once again, anyone from the public wishing to speak? Did I change your mind? Nope. Moving on to item 22. Chairman?
Just, I'm just saying, just want to appreciate everybody in Swanee County, just kind of showing the truth, and definitely, you know, we've done it for these, these pushers for quite a while now, and this is most we've ever sold, most we've ever made, and because of all the outpouring of the movies, and then we have to watch you a lot of walk up down to Branford, 91. Thank you to people in Swanee County for coming out and helping in the ESOP situation. Thank you all.
Thanks, sir. Administrator comments and information, you got anything, Ms. Harris?
I will be brief, I have nothing tonight.
Board members, request comments, Ms. Hill?
I have nothing.
Sessions?
Good.
Richardson? Ms. Fleming?
I have just a small one. I was in Tallahassee this morning, and I went to the EEP, BMAT meeting, and I found out a lot of information. And I don't want to, you know, we're briefed tonight, I don't want to kill it, but just in short, we're talking about the fertilizer that we were talking about a couple of years ago, and I'm at septic tanks. And the people that live out in the rural, going to be paying, and it ain't going to be good, and even down to agriculture. So I did ask the question, these people come out of Adam Putnam's office, it was his assistants, and come out of the governor's, straight out of the governor's office, and they gave us good information. I told them that I really appreciate being there, and Chris Doolin invited me to be there this morning. There was a lot of stuff that came out of it, and how the legislature, they put $50 million into coughing to do a research on the fertilizers, and the fertilizers is destroying agriculture. So that means that farmers are going to have to cut back, they won't be able to put as much fertilizer on their crops. And practically, what is, what is. And practically, what is, I asked the question, I said, "What we're doing, we're doing with the farm then." And they couldn't say no. And then I asked, I said, "Who is this funded by? Is it the state of Florida? It's mandated by the state of Florida through the federal government." So it's getting to the point to where we're being controlled, and our voices are being heard, and that was the reason that we was up there this morning. But as I get more information, and then water management want to come, and they want to do a presentation, I didn't go out on a limb and invite them to come, but I get with the chairman and kind of administrator, get with staff, and we get some directive where they can come and do a presentation, talk about some of these things. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. The only thing I have, Friday night, Chamber of Commerce put on their third annual father-daughter dance, and it's first year that I was able to talk my little girl into going to it, and they just wanted to get my hats off, they did a very, very good job. And she's eight-year-old, wore high heels, and we were gone by seven, she said, "I don't know how women do that." But other than that, I don't have anything, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Move. Second.
All right. Thanks, sir. Meet number two.